So good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Regular, City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we will start with Pledge of Allegiance. Deputy Mayor Furtone is volunteered to lead us. Deputy Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, free, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Welcome, everyone. Um, do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Been moved in second, or any changes, alterations, or discussion?
Quick question.
Yes.
Um, I believe that a fair amount of our public comments may be around the budget. Did we consider having our presentation before public comment in case this answers people's questions, or is this too late to make that change?
I think that'd be a little bit difficult to make the change now.
Okay.
Um, leave it up to council to make that determination.
That should be helpful.
We do have folks here that are, um.
It might be helpful.
For other reasons.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it up just in case it it might make things go smoother if they.
I think we'll be moving forward fairly quickly unless anybody has a real strong feeling about it. Okay, all right. Uh, all those in favor of adoption of the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes. The ayes have it. Thank you. And I just know everybody's here in person. Welcome back, everybody. We've had a bunch of people that have been traveling and also had some health challenges. I'm glad you're all well and rested. So, um, we're going to be, uh, first of all, let me start by saying, please, everyone, including colleagues here up on the dais, make sure you turn off your phones, email reminders, everything else. I was just in a meeting this afternoon that was mind-numbingly boring. And I had to listen to chime to somebody's emails coming through every thirty seconds. So out of courtesy to your friends, please turn it off, uh, in your phones as well. With that, we're going to be starting with public comments. Uh, the council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have, excuse me, purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have control over, influence or control over, excuse me, then the mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker to suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments, uh, are limited to a three-minute time limit. Chief, thank you, sir. Welcome back. All right, and we will start at the top. Uh, Jeff Sneddon, Jeff, welcome.
It's only a twenty-minute talk. Uh, so over the last, I I spent some time the last couple of days looking at all ten meetings the councils had regarding the levy. Um, in particular, I looked at what is available for today. Uh, we have a variety of documents. This one, Consider Property Tax Levis, shows how much a homeowner would pay based on three different, uh, levy increases. A document called Possible Items Funded, listing where additional revenue would go, but I'm not clear on whether these cuts, these are cuts, or whether they've been restored and how those feed into the model. Um, I have another one, uh, Rates Agenda Cover, which shows the financial impacts, but it does not have anything, and it's on the, you know, the list of things. Doesn't include the general fund, which I think is pretty important and really the subject of what I'm talking about. Separately, I found this interesting one, which is a general fund balance that goes back to two thousand fifteen. And it's very interesting here that you see this gigantic leap up, where we have had a budget down here, or a budget, we've had a, a fund of about two, two and a half million, and it goes up to about three million, and then it's up to nine million. And so this is a significant change in the amount of money that's setting in the general fund. I can't explain it. I have an idea what it might be, but it's not important. It is a much larger number. Um, what I don't know is what the council has in hand in terms of a decision support tool or a spreadsheet that allows them to model the impact of different levy rates. From zero to higher rates, put in your rate that you want, or different timing of scenarios, do it in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and its impact ultimately on the general fund. What I've observed in looking at these ten meetings is the majority of the council's discussion appears to be centered on the potential budget cuts and restoring them or not, and whether they're in or not in the models. Um, I'll talk about the levy increase, but very little conversation about how large the general fund should be and is, and where we want that, because that's a critical component. Uh, the council's ultimate focus, in my opinion, should be to really understand the impact of changes in the levy rate on the general fund, because the general fund is the key to the city's financial solvency. How can the council decide how much to increase taxes if you don't have the tools to model these choices and these outcomes? The general fund now at about nine million is taxpayer money. Maybe some of it came from outside, uh, Lake Forest Park. It's taxpayers' money. It must be carefully managed, and that requires data-driven decisions on how much it should be. Ultimately, the amount is a subjective choice. Having the right decision tools should be non-negotiable. They should be in the hands of every council member who can use them. I know of a spreadsheet that does exist. John Lebo has one. I've seen it. I've used it. I think it's incredibly informative. If the goal tonight is to simply pick from one of three levy increases and move on, um, if that's the case, that's the sound of one hand clapping. I don't think you should, I think you should not vote on any specific levy proposal tonight. Not twenty-eight cents, not twenty-six, not twenty-four, until you have the data and decision tools you need to make responsible fact-based decisions, and that's shared equally to all of the council members. And I remember what the twenty twenty-four community survey told us. Residents want cuts, truly, but they also want other funding sources explored first. Secondly, residents, some residents doubt the city will spend new tax revenue responsibly. I think you've made very good strides in explaining that. Public safety is incredibly important. There's no need to rush. I confirmed with King County Elections, the final levy lift resolution, the pro and con committees, and the members are not due until August fifth. So there is time. There isn't a gun to anybody's head to make the decision on three predetermined rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, let's see. Bryce James. Bryce, welcome.
Well, council, mayor, also speaking about the levy lift. Um, I've been a financial analyst for over forty years and have a designation from Wharton and, uh, as a certified investment management analyst, and I'm looking through the data. I, it's, it appears we're solving for X, which to me is revenue expenses and not looking at Y, and if I only looked at revenue expenses, it'd be like looking at Amazon and saying they should have gone bankrupt every year for the first twenty years in business, without looking at their capitalization, you know, their, their, in this case, their capital account, or, um, for general fund. And so to me, the best way to start is, is take the general fund and our policy of sixteen percent and call that a base case and see what happens when we take the, the balance sheet, less the revenue expenses forecasted outwards into the, into the time period expected, and then, and then call that our base case. And then the second thing I would do is go ahead and take a, a number, maybe it's what Samurai used for, uh, the six million dollars, um, and, and call that a best case scenario, and then also calculate a worst case scenario. It seems to me that we're looking at the worst case scenario in the current model without involving everything else. So before I did any of this, I would also look at these discretionary funds that are available. It seems to me that, um, that we're not looking at the contingency fund, the budget stabilization fund, the strategic opportunity fund, and all the other funds that may flow in that, including, um, uh, potential revenues from what would be like the, the traffic cams and everything else. It seems like I would want to know that whole number, uh, not just what's in the fund, but what will come into the funds in the future as well. And I'd even model out maybe what AAI will do to, uh, administration costs and time. What would that look like? And so to me, it's, it's a little bit bigger picture, and, um, and to me, um, it also looks like the budget cuts have been restored into this model. So the, the optics, uh, as a citizen would be, is that really, is there a struggle on both sides of the fence? Is there a struggle in the city to cut costs? Um, and, and, and I think that's where you combine the community. Um, if I'm creating like this year, three new civic services, does that really give me the feeling of, of being uh, in bed with each other, so to speak? Are we tied to each other? And, and seeing that we've had these past levy failures and Briar just taking a big hit, um, I, I'd feel like that would be something I'd want to do is connect. And so it just seems like the, the, the last resort would be the levy lift, that I'd first look at maybe a sales tax or budget cuts or what have you, because it's, it's really a regressive tax that hurts the, 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 the lower income producers, the renters, and I'd want to know that impact. So I guess what I really want is I want to restore a citizen budget committee, and I think that's the best way to prioritize it. We have two-thirds of the city with advanced, or of our town with advanced degrees. Uh, over one-fourth have, uh, even higher degrees, PhDs, MDs, et cetera. We have some serious talent here, and I would just love to restore the citizen committee, budget committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Hey, uh, Alan Keast. Alan, welcome.
Mayor and council, the city briefing paper in your packet includes this sentence, quote, "Without a vote of approval by LFP residents, the city's revenue growth is limited by state law to one percent, which for twenty twenty-five amounted to thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars," close quote. "The city budget presentation portrays my household of assessed value eight hundred and fifteen, slightly less than the average, as paying five hundred and eighty-one dollars in property tax, and suggests that I vote to add at the twenty-four cent level a hundred and ninety-five dollars for a new total of seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for city services. This presentation is a distortion of how city services are funded. State law requires cities to provide fire and library services. I and other residents voted in the nineteen eighties to relieve the city of fire services by annexing to the fire district. We voted again in the nineteen nineties to relieve the city of library services by annexing to the county library district. And we pay the city separately for service water management, which is not limited by state law. So my household is now paying the following: five, five hundred and eighty-one dollars city property tax, six hundred and sixty-three dollars fire tax, four hundred and sixty-two dollars fire benefit charge, two hundred dollars library tax, three hundred and forty-three dollars lake forest park surface water management, totaling not five hundred and eighty-one dollars, not seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. It's totaling two thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars, as is, for current city services. The city is portraying itself as cash poor and consequently is asking the residents to commit to a six-year tax increase. And we learned at the September eighteenth budget committee meeting that the intention of city officials is to immediately renew the levy after the sixth year. Yet the city takes no action to transfer to the general fund the following: the council contingency fund of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, the budget stabilization fund of three hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and two dollars, the strategic opportunity fund of one million seven thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Those three funds that are available to this council total one million three hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. City residents expect honesty and transparency from our city officials, and they expect the resources of the city to be prudently used so as to avoid an unnecessary burden to their family budgets, which are experiencing profound stress now and over the next six years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, let's see. Checking here. Um, Eko, did you want to speak or not speak? Okay. Thank you for signing in, though. Just checking to make sure. Uh, and I can't quite reach it. Is this David Pyle? David, welcome. Apologies, my.
No problem. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council, David Pyle. Um, I am a public service professional, twenty-five years of public service. I have a master's degree in public administration, a master's degree in environmental science. I work in local government for a different jurisdiction. I'm a Lake Forest Park resident, and I really love living here. I love what you all have done with this community and continue to do with this community, and I really support everything that you do. Had a survey recently sent my way, really appreciated that, was able to give feedback on some of the things I find valuable. Um, appreciated that opportunity. I'm also very aware, um, because I work in, in this daily, the challenges in trying to close budget gaps. Um, I really appreciate the work you've been doing on this levy. I support the maximum levy. I support, um, bringing on board more police, training our police, making sure we have public safety funded to the fullest in the community. I have four children, age twelve to eighteen. I would say that my two drivers are probably funding a lot of your budget through the speed cameras. Um, and, um, I, I do want to say that I really appreciate knowing that my children are safe when they walk down the street and knowing that even though I'm feel watched by the cameras, people slow down. Um, I have received tickets myself, and it keeps me in check. So I really do appreciate all the things you do. Um, I just want to say that, you know, having contingencies is really important. You know, we were hit in the city I work in by the bomb cyclone really hard. Um, millions of dollars it cost us to clean it up. We got hit here, paled in comparison. We, I would say, didn't really get hit here. Um, so just something like that that comes through your budget, we were denied FEMA funding. Um, and we had to carry the cost of that cleanup ourselves. So having that contingency fund in place is vitally important because you need to have those resources available when emergencies happen. Um, so I do support everything that you're doing and really appreciate it. Now, the real reason why I came here was the trash contract. So I've been having some significant issues in my, in my neighborhood with the delivery of service from Republic Services. Um, we have been having challenges where they are dropping the cans in different locations that are closer to other bins, and then they're refusing to pick up those bins because the, the one bin that they dropped closer to the other bin is too close, and they're saying, well, that bin was too close. We can't pick up that one. Um, they are charging overage fees when they shouldn't be charging overage fees. I sit on hold on the phone for hours trying to get ahold of somebody. I can't get any corrections out of them. They're very nice when you do get ahold of them. So don't get me wrong, I really appreciate their service representatives when you actually can get them on the phone. Um, but it's been a really big challenge. I've had, um, you know, not a lot of money, but enough money that it's the principle of it that is driving me crazy. Um, we've had trash spilled on our street. We have to pick it up. They don't pick it up. Um, there, you know, the, the contract says that if a bit of a lid is open by more than six inches, that you get an overage fee. I get that. We have cats. We have a cat box. We put it in the top of the bin. It tips the bin up about three inches, and every time we do that, they charge us an overage fee, even though the bin isn't fully full. So I just want to say that I called them, and they said that it is the, the city that is telling them to charge those fees. So here I am. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Definitely have somebody look into that. Thank you very much. Nate Herzog. Welcome, Nate. Long time.
It has.
How are you?
Doing well. Thank you, Your Honor and members of the council. Uh, first off, I, uh, do have my truck in case anyone needs some trash collection. Uh, a couple of things. I, uh, first item, I want to, uh, thank the, uh, officers, uh, the LFP PD that responded Sunday. Uh, my fifteen-year-old, uh, our family dog was, uh, struck and killed on fifty-fifth. Um, got out of the gate. That, that part was, uh, on, on me, but, uh, there was a motorcyclist going about forty-five in a twenty-five, uh, and that was the motorcyclist's admission to the officers, so, um, I don't think he was probably lowballing it. Uh, that's a street, uh, that's had a lot of trouble lately. Uh, my, this is actually the second time in three months I'd seen, uh, Officer Alson. Uh, I was walking my four-year-old daughter to preschool, uh, two preschools on that street. And, uh, there was a car speeding by, T-boned right there, fifty-fifth and two hundred and fourth. He was on scene. Um, that part of, uh, road, we have double the amount of, uh, school bus stops. We've got both the shoreline and the north shore side. Uh, not everyone knows this, but, uh, there is a portion of, uh, the North Shore School District that is in Lake Forest Park, so there are LFP kids that go to Bothell High School. Is there a home high school? Uh, so, uh, appreciate the continued enforcement. There was, uh, enforcement, uh, I'm sure the chief is aware, uh, both this morning and uh, this afternoon, so very much appreciate this, uh, that continued effort. On the matter of the levy lid lift, I think, uh, you know, you've got a choice whether you make it tonight or later this month. Um, to review your options, and I think there's probably some middle ground that can be found. I, I personally think a ten to twelve percent increase, uh, in the levy, uh, levy lid would be a very reasonable, uh, something in that range. Um, you know, for my family, I'm a federal employee, so, uh, the next four years, the only, uh, coal I'm going to see is probably out of a vending machine. So, um, you know, it's, it's going to be a hit. It's, uh, you know, every dollar that, uh, you know, comes, uh, this way for services that are obviously very important, uh, comes directly out of that, uh, family budget. So, uh, there's, there's going to be an impact, uh, cumulative impact as well. In the past twelve months, uh, we've, uh, supported both, uh, of the, uh, tax increases that the fire district has put forward. Uh, next month, the school district has about, uh, for my family, about a three hundred dollar annual levy increase. I'm supporting that. Uh, school district is going to be coming back for another one in February. So there's really a substantial cumulative effect, and I hope that's taken into, uh, consideration. Um, and that, uh, if you have the chance to perhaps find a middle ground, take a little time, uh, find a solution that's somewhere in between. Like I said, I think ten to twelve percent is certainly, uh, reasonable, so, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate your comments. Very sorry to hear about your, your doc. Um, let's see. Uh, Ken Cassover. Ken, welcome. Sure not missing anyone here.
Well, thank you. Uh. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and, uh, honorable council members. I appreciate the chance to talk before you today. I am here, uh, in support of the doing what we can as far as the, uh, levy lift for the police department. I know that you guys are going to be spending, and already have spent lots of time going over the data, the figures, the amounts. We're in this problem, as you already know, because of the way our state laws work, that we can't even keep up with inflation. If we just were able to do that, we'd be well, way ahead of what we're talking about now. Um, the, our police department, and you guys know this too. Our police department is the heart and soul of the, part of the heart and soul of this community. We have officers that know what community policing is about. One of the things that I'm most proud of about living in Lake Forest Park is our police department. And I've seen it in all sorts of ways. I've lived here for over eighteen years. I've had contacts with the police. They never, they never arrested me, by the way. But not yet. Not, not yet. But they have helped me out, and I've seen them, you know, and I've worked with them some. You know, my background, I do have, in my professional life, I had, uh, experiences, a, um, of forensic, uh, and police, and forensic and police psychology. So I know how important they are in terms of domestic safety. And I, the way I see them deal with the public is absolutely incredible. And so like we, there's been some protests here recently, and it's not that the officers necessarily support everything that the protesters are protesting about. It's not their job to do that. It's their job to ensure that we live in a country where free speech is allowed, where people are treated equally um, and with respect. And what I heard from some of them was not, oh, well, we really support your protest. I wouldn't want them to say that, frankly. What they were saying is, well, you know, everybody here is supporting their right as a, uh, the rights that we have in this country, and we're, part of our job is to help out with that. So, you know, we also have to be concerned about emergencies, and I'm gonna, I know that we're all going to look towards them, and if we have an underfunded police department, we may run into the sort of situation that has recently occurred in Texas, and we don't want that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate your comments. Okay, I think we've got exhausted our list here, but I wanted to check and see if there's anyone else in the chambers would like to, um, make public comment at this time. One more, sorry. Yes.
I'd also like to acknowledge that we did receive letters from Jack Tonkin and from Win Harper.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate it. With that, we'll close public comment. It's me too loud here. All right, everyone, we're going to be moving on to presentation. Uh, Lake Forest Park Library Update, and we have, oh, you, oh, there we go. Al Starnen, uh, Regional Manager, and, and our friends from the Library Advisory Committee. So welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming to us. You have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a slideshow, uh, which should be brought up pretty quick here, I think. Yeah, there we go. All right. Hello, Lake Forest Park City Council. I'm Alice Starnen. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a regional manager with King County Library System. And I'm joined tonight by Katie Boyce, the Librarian and Information Services Manager for Lake Forest Park, as well as Lolly Smith and Eloise Boyle, who are members of the Library Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. Lake Forest Park residents have access to King County libraries, and we want everyone to be informed and aware of the ways that people can benefit from what libraries have to offer. To accomplish this, the library presents to city councils every year or so about how we serve people. We're joined tonight by wonderful advocates for the library, the city's library advisory committee. Thank you so much for creating time on your agenda for us to speak to you today. Tonight, Katie and I would like to share about library use in the past year and highlight some resources and programs. Then we'll invite the LAC members to share some information about the library's history in the community, as well as a teaser about celebrating the freedom to read. At the end of our presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Next slide, please. King County Library System has fifty library locations throughout the county. The Lake Forest Park Library is smack in the center of what KCLS has named the Alder Region. Alder's libraries are spread out in a line east to west across the north end of the county. As regional manager, I oversee these five libraries, and the library managers in the region report to me. Katie is one of my direct reports, who supervises the librarians who work at Lake Forest Park, as well as the Bothell and Kenmore Libraries. I am also KCLS's ex-officio member of the Lake, excuse me, Library Advisory Committee, and I have the pleasure of attending their meetings. Next slide. KCLS collects a variety of metrics to understand how people are using the library each year. Since the pandemic, use of the Lake Forest Park Library continues to go up. Here's a snapshot of some statistics from twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-four. And you can see we've increased across people coming in, items checking out, people with active library accounts. We've also provided a handout with more recent use numbers. The handout also features KCLS's new Curiosity Isn't Quiet campaign, which is meant to reinforce the idea that the library is a place for interaction and asking questions. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Katie to share more with you about library resources and programs.
Next slide, please. Hello. Thanks for having us today. In addition to the in-person collections that you can browse and the assistance you can get from live humans at the Lake Forest Park Library, we have a wide range of online resources available to all library cardholders. Favorites include Consumer Reports Online, The New York Times, which includes Cooking and The Athletic. Language learning options from Mango and Rosetta Stone and Hoopla and Canopy offer, um, streaming, video streaming options for people. All of this available at no extra cost with your library card. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, look at that. I have some animation on there. You guys, okay. Uh, library programs help us bring the library collection to life, and they give patrons opportunity to come in, to connect to the library, the staff, and to each other. We have three librarians that work at Lake Forest Park. Julie is our Children's Services Librarian. She has storytime every week on Thursdays and plans, um, different programs throughout the year, utilizing the stage upstairs. She also reaches out to local schools. Evan is our Teen Services Librarian. He provides volunteer and leadership opportunities for teens in the community with the Teen Leadership Council, where teens get together to plan a community event. And then this Saturday, uh, there'll be a screen printing demonstration, uh, for all ages that he's planned. Uh, uh, this Saturday from one to four. And then Greg is our Adult Services Librarian. He plans a wide variety of programs. And coming up, we have the Wisdom Cafe, and this is where anyone, but particularly older adults, can come and reflect and share about their experiences and really have a time of connection. And coming up, as I, I think you've been told about before, is the Reads Program. Their event is coming up on July twenty-ninth at Third Place Commons. Next slide, please. And last but certainly that I'm going to mention, not least, we have the. And last but certainly that I'm going to mention, not least, we have the Summer Reading Program, and I want, want to invite all of you and all of the Lake Forest Park residents to participate. We have Book Bingo for Adults, and this is our first year partnering with the Seattle Public Library on their really cool Book Bingo. And so if adults read either five books to get a bingo or 25 and get a blackout, they can be entered into a prize drawing. And for kids ages zero to 17, we have Curious Creatures, where kids can set their own reading goal, and when they reach it, they can come and get a prize. That's our summer reading program. It's a, it's a fantastic library tradition. And now here is Lolly from the ALC to talk about library history.
Change slide. A little history, for those of you who may be new. On June 20th, 1965, Lake Forest Park's first library opened in what was then called Forest Park Center. Despite the fact that it moved a few times, since then, our library has always remained located in the mall. In 1970, the library was moved to a larger spot on the lowest level, and many people can remember coming to the library via the alley in the olden days. In the 1990s, population growth challenged all city services, and the library again needed a larger space, a bigger materials budget, and a more welcoming location. Slide change, please. In 1996, Lake Forest Park Library made a big change when it was moved to the main level near the mall entrance. Highly successful in this new spot, the library grew rapidly, and in a short time, changes were once again needed. In 2004, King County voters approved a $172 million levy bond, and an expanded library was included in the plans. In 2011, the city created the Lake Forest Park Library Advisory Committee. We see minutes from an active group of community members whose mission it is to support and promote reading as a lifelong activity. The committee continues to curate the Summer Reads Program, attend the Lake Forest Park Market as outreach and connection to the community, to collaborate with other King County branches in Shoreline and Richmond Beach, and act as a liaison between the Lake Forest Park Library, the City Council, the City Mayor, community of Lake Forest Park, and the King County Library System, which is the biggest in the state. Change slide. I don't think the mic is on. It's on, it's just not red.
The mic down just a little bit closer to. There you go.
How's that?
Perfect.
Great, thank you. A suitable location on the lower level of the mall offered 5,841 square feet of space, a 60% increase in size compared to the previous library. The new space, which opened in January 2012, has a dedicated children's area, a teen zone, as well as an often requested multipurpose room. I'm a proud member, a proud citizen of Lake Forest Park, and this is, I feel this is a city that leads with forward thinking around public safety, in the environment, and community. I see those values reflected in our library, which has been an open, welcoming, nurturing part of the Lake Forest Park City campus for many years. People come to the library for so many reasons: for books, to print, to ask questions, to find out things. Parents and young children come for storytime, teens to work together on new ideas for library programming. Patrons sit and read newspapers and journals to stay informed about what's happening right here and around the world. Gone are the days of silence and shushing. In fact, librarians are some of the most innovative thinkers in society today, and I personally think Lake Forest Park is all the richer for our library and its staff. It's wonderful how the library fits into the values and aspirations of Lake Forest Park. Our city strives to care for its citizens' rights to safety and a clean environment. Our library is committed to our citizens' right to freedom of information. Next slide, please. Finally, we'd like to share with you a part of the library's mission that we are passionate about: celebrating the freedom to read. Intellectual freedom is a critical part of the library's vision, mission, and values. King County Library System defines intellectual freedom as the right of everyone to seek out information, ideas, and expressive content of any kind within the law. Libraries are committed to facilitating and safeguarding equitable access, privacy, and an extensive range of constitutionally protected speech, perspectives, and viewpoints. The First Amendment protects the right to freedom of speech, which includes the freedom to access information. October is a month dedicated to celebrating the freedom to read. We hope to find time on your city council agendas in August and September for the Library Advisory Committee and KCLS to share more with you on this important topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eloise, and Lolly, and Katie for joining me today, and now we'd welcome any questions from the council. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Colleagues, questions for friends from the library district? Oh, yes, Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Yes, I wanted to thank you and the other presenters for giving a great snapshot of why the library is important in addition to the fact that it's so heavily used by our residents. Do you see any new things coming down the road in terms of facilities or other needs that you might have? Sky's the limit here.
We, we have a new library director. She's been there for, oh, gosh, I don't know. Yeah, a year, maybe, I don't know. And anyway, she is interested in, in the library world, creating more interactive spaces in our children's areas, and so that is something that I kind of see coming down the pike. And just from what I've observed of how parents and families use the library, it would be very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, other questions or comments? Yeah, Vice President Golden.
Um, yeah, thank you all for coming tonight. I don't actually have a question. I just wanted to thank you for the work you're doing. The libraries are tremendous public good, and I'm glad that it's a strength thing in the Lake Forest Park community.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Okay, I would just like to add my thanks, too. I, I was not born when the library started in 65, but I do remember the alley very well and participated in the summer programs every summer, and my nine-year-old absolutely loves the library. So thank you for all you do, and the protection of the freedom to read is an absolute paramount, paramount importance right now. So we thank you for that and look forward to what you have to bring back to us in the subsequent months. So thank you again for what you do. Appreciate it. Have a great evening, everybody. All right, with that, we're moving on to final confirmation, appointment of Linda Holman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And colleagues, it's my great pleasure to have Linda stand before us. She has been a singular tour de force in parks volunteering for decades. And with that, I'll let, Corey, did you want to introduce Linda, or?
I just want to thank Linda for coming back to the Parks Board. I appreciate all that she does for the community and me. I look at her as a mentor. She is fantastic to work with and looking forward to bringing our projects to the Park Board now.
Linda, would you like to introduce yourself? I think many of the colleagues, our colleagues know you, but for the edification of everyone else.
Hi, I'm Linda Holman. I've been a resident in Lake Forest Park for 41 years, and I've been involved in volunteering in the city for probably almost, almost all of that time. I started out on the Park Board with the original Park Board Group, and then went to Community Services, and then went back to Community Services, and here I am again, ready to start over with the Park Board and try to get some projects going that are dear to my heart and, and support the ones that are currently going. So that's what I'm doing here.
Thank you, Linda. Colleagues, questions or, or, you're welcome to give her accolades, too, because she gets things done. Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
And, yeah, I can't say enough thank you for the work you put in for our community. I mean, you know, work at the Demonstration Garden and Animal Acres, for instance, that's just the tip of the iceberg, but I know that's a really heavy lift. I'm intrigued by your switch over to the Parks Board. What, what, what made you decide, basically, this was the moment to come back to the Parks Board?
Well, after building up the Demonstration Garden with the Master Gardeners since 2012, it's now fused into a really strong and, and good event, and we have really good people taking care of it. And I started looking around, and Corey started saying, why don't you come back to the Park Board? And then I started looking around at things that still concern me, like Blue Heron Park, which I'm about to start a massive project on there. And I thought, well, I can't resist this. I have to come back, you know? It's like full circle. Park Board, this, Community Services, Park Board. So here I am.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda. I know that you are very interested in like pollinator gardens and stuff, and I'm curious to see if you're bringing that passion of yours to the Park Board as well.
Hopefully, yeah. We, we now have a huge pollinator area in Animal Acres, so, yeah, I'd like to move that along into other parks and more education to the public and that kind of thing. You know, I think it's really critical.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Colleagues, other questions or comments? I would also say that Linda's a famous plant rescuer. We, she facilitated the rescue of some plants at the local One and Four a while ago, last summer, if I recall correctly. With that, I entertain a motion for appointment of Linda Holman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Deputy Mayor Ferratani?
With the great pleasure, I'd like to move forward with the final confirmation of the appointment of Linda Holman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, for final confirmation of appointment of Linda Holman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Are there any comments? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes. Guys have it, it passes unanimously. Say welcome back. Appreciate the volunteer. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar. I entertain a motion for adoption.
It's moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes. Guys have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much for that, and we're moving on to ordinances and resolution for action. We have only one item here, Item A, Resolution 252021, providing for a ballot measure to be submitted to the qualified electors of the city of, at the general election to be held on November 4th, 2025, in conjunction with the state general election, a proposition authorizing the city to levy regular property taxes in an amount in excess of limitations provided in Chapter 84-55 RCW for police and public safety services beginning in 2026. I need to take a deep breath after that. Administrator Hill, you're the lead on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Evening, council. I'm gonna wait just a second for the, to throw my presentation up. No, not this part.
Well, he's bringing that up. Tonight, in your packet are three resolutions, as was mentioned earlier, 24, 26, and 28 cents per thousand. Those were included after the last discussion with council. Those were the three amounts that got at least one or two head nods, and so we included those calculations in resolutions for your consideration tonight. After my presentation, I know that we have Deputy Mayor Ferratani's table that he sent out that can be put up for discussion. We also have the working spreadsheet that Councilmember Good has provided recently that we can put up to help you walk through scenarios as we've done at past meetings. So we'll walk through that a little bit later. Does it not want to do a presentation note? Seeing the menu. PDFs are hard to work with. Need, I can grab my computer and join.
It looked like a couple menus were missing there for the presentation mode.
I'm just gonna share my screen. Okay.
There we go.
Okay. So as we've been discussing over the course of several months, we've been talking about the budget challenges that the city has been facing. For a long time, there's been a structural deficit, revenues to expenditures, and over the past several years, that has grown extensively. A lot of that has to do with the 24%, roughly 24% rise in inflation over the past four years. But outside of that, in the last biennium, we saw some major increases to our budget that were unanticipated. It's already been discussed earlier tonight that without a vote of approval by LFP residents, you are limited as a council to a 1% increase in your revenues that you can vote on each year. As was stated in 2025, that amounted to $34,500. So 1% obviously is far below what inflation has been for quite a while. During the 23-24 biennium, the increases that were placed upon the city outside of the city's ability to control those, first was the 9/11 dispatch increase of $284,000 per year. This was a result of our longtime provider of 9/11 dispatch, of Bothell City, having to step out of that arena. It was costing them far more than they could afford as a city. We looked at our options. The chief explored them heavily, and the only option that worked best for the city and had the lowest costs, that startup and similar costs going forward, was to join Norcom. While we saw $284,000 per year increase, the benefit of being with Bothell, they were carrying the weight, and they actually saw a decrease in there. So it tells you how much they were paying to provide that service for the two cities. Jail costs have increased $197,000 per year. This is not something that was brought on by the city. These are just the costs of jail services across the county. As you remember, council took action in the recent past to take longer-term inmates to Sunrise Jail, which is clear over on the east side, quite a trip, and these can only be for long-term incarcerations in jail. On top of that, we have insurance costs increasing by over $109,000 per year in 2023 and another $84,000 per year in '24. This has a lot to do with the insurance agencies within the state and state laws that pass, insurance agencies pulling out of the state, reinsurers getting down to one or two. And so the Washington City Insurance Authority, which this city belongs, has passed those costs on to the cities. As we've discussed, public safety is our largest expense of 34% of budgeted expenses, and this includes more than just the police officers that you see on the street. It's the officers and their gear. It's 9/11 dispatch. It's the Mental Health Crisis Response Agency, so that's Racer, formerly known as Radar, co-response with our police officers. Jail costs, insurance costs, patrol vehicles, prosecuting attorney. We have our own courts. We have our prosecuting attorney that is contracted through the administration, and then public defenders. This is a cost that is a significant cost today, and based on the actions of the State Supreme Court within the next 10 years could triple in cost to the city based on the two-thirds reduction in caseload that any one public defender can handle in a year. As we have been discussing in the 24-25 biennial budget, approximately $455,000 in needed staffing, fleet services, and operations were cut. That was a work between the administration and council leadership at the time to bring that forward. Within the budget sheet, there is consideration for those being put back in because these are one-time cuts that are not sustainable. Within the budget sheet, there is consideration for those being put back in because these are one-time cuts that are not sustainable. There's staff that are needed. We've had recent discussions on fleet and the operations. As we've discussed in the past, the operations were cut, travel and training, cross-the-board for staff, council, and the mayor. I get to hear myself again. I'll wait till I stop talking, Linda. Thanks, Dan. But despite those cuts, the council had to balance the 2526 budget at the tune of roughly $900,000 to cover the remaining deficit. I won't get into detail on these. These are included in your packet. They're available to the public. But these look at the three rates that are included in your packet tonight as resolutions. As I mentioned before, at the last city council meeting, there was some consensus among council members for these three rates. Not, I'm not sure which were unanimous, but at 24 cents, you'll see the median home value in the city for 2025 is 914,000. The 24 cent increase would mean to the city 219 additional dollars annually. You jump to 26 cents, that goes from 219 to $237 annually roughly, and then up to $255 annually. The one thing that I want to point out, because it's been discussed quite a bit, is that for every dollar that you pay in property tax to King County, 7.7 cents of that goes to the city. So outside of fire and sorry, library services, et cetera, every other service that the city provides is paid for by that 7 cents, 7 cents out of every dollar. And so just to give context. And then one other thing that we should point out is that the levy rate that you see, that is driven by a calculation of the county. So regardless of how much your home and value increases per year, the levy rate is reduced so that the city still collects roughly the same amount of taxes that it did in the prior year. So what the city collects is not proportional to the increase of value in your home. And then the only increase that the council can take by vote is that extra 1% beyond what they collected in the previous year. That's all I have for this presentation. I stand for any questions? The city attorney Pratt is here, can answer questions as well. And then, as I mentioned, we have deputy mayor's sheet we can put up, as well as councilmember Good's spreadsheet to walk through some scenarios with you tonight.
Just one more clarification and a point. Member of the public made a comment earlier about fire and library. I think it's important to understand that that these are the things that we have control over. Those were carved out by the council, including our commentator at the time. So there was no, there was no sleight of hand or obfuscation when it comes to the numbers here. This is what we have control over. We provide those services. And I would also note that fire and library have had multiple levies over a period of years, including bonds, bond measures as well. So I think it's very important to recognize what we have control over. And I, I personally take issue with the fact that, that comment, honestly. Councilmember Riddle.
And also somewhat in response or in, from hearing from a comment, we cannot supplement our general fund from other funds that may seem like they're flush with money. They are, like the traffic fund has to go to a specific use. It cannot go to general fund use. So we're keeping all of our conversations here focused directly on the general fund, simply because it's, we can't help ourselves with any of the other buckets of money. So understanding that piece that we're not going to get saved by our traffic fund or a capital fund. We have to solve it within the mechanisms that we have here that are available to actually impacting the general fund, which is our general operations fund.
Councilwoman Lebo.
Thank you, Administrator Hill. Could you talk a little more about the other fund sources that we have that are used for the general fund, which covers things like public works and our public safety? So as I understand, property taxes are not the sole source of income or revenue for our police and other activities. And those other sources, are they also limited by 1% state requirement?
I'm sorry, I'm.
So.
Are you talking about like, say, utility taxes?
Utility taxes also go into our general fund, and are they limited by 1%?
They are not limited by 1%.
Have they been growing greater than 1%?
Council took action this last year to institute a solid waste tax at 10% and increase the sewer and stormwater utility tax by 4% to a maximum of 10% currently.
Thank you. And the sales tax is also another revenue source that we use for public works and public safety and administrative costs. They're not also limited by requirements for a state 1% limit?
No, they are limited by state law. We have taken every sales tax option as a city that we can, minus the new 0.1% sales tax for police services that was just put into law. And we're waiting for how that lays out, what the rules and obligations will be. But otherwise, the city takes every sales tax option that is available to it.
But when we represent to the public that the property tax is limited by 1% increase per year, that doesn't reflect that we also see other revenue sources that may not have such limitations. For example, a sales tax which goes into our general fund is really a function of how much people spend in Lake Forest Park. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Alex, other questions for Administrator Hill? Just a second, let's go around the board. Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
So, yeah, thanks very much for your presentation. And I'm just wondering, you know, there's, there's been a lot of talk about this general fund balance. And one of the things that I wanted to find out from you was that 16% reserve that we need to keep, that's a state requirement.
No, 16% is a council requirement. I believe the state requirement is 5%. That's very, very tight. As I think you've noted, the 16% is about 60 days of general fund operations for the city.
And in your professional, I know that we don't have our finance director here, but in your experience, is it sensible for a city to get even close to that reserve level in terms of what's left in the general fund balance at the end of a biennium?
I think if you go back and look at previous biennia, the 2017, 18, I might get my numbers wrong. Anyway, where were we, 20? I'm not gonna do math on TV, sorry. But prior to the pandemic, let's put it that way, our general fund reserves on average were sitting right near that 16%. The huge growth that you see in that is due to CARES and ARPA dollars that were rolled in as lost revenue as part of the Recovery Act. But generally, I'd say 16% is a fairly good place to be.
So, well, the reason I'm asking this, if I can do one last follow-up on that, is without the CARES Act, without the ARPA funds, what would have happened to the city finances?
Oh, I can't begin to.
Would a fair assessment, and they would have been much more dire than they are today?
We would be a lot closer, yes, correct.
Yeah. Councilmember Carton.
So we understand what the, the floor is, that 16%. Has there been discussion around what is our comfort level above that 16%? Do we have a goal in mind? Because I feel like establishing that metric is something that is helpful, that we can work back from as we're talking about a levy fund. And truly, what is the goal of this group? And has that been identified or discussed?
So that is something that council would set. So you've set, regardless of state law saying 5%. Council, previous councils have said, that's too tight for us. We want 60 days operation, you know, 16%. There is merit in putting a cap. I mean, how long do you sit on it? You know, it is taxpayer money. Should you, if you have extra dollars, not reinvest that somewhere within the city? Do something for the public that, you know, they're asking for.
Vice President Goldman.
Yes, thank you. I do think it's important for us to think about the absolute value of what's in the general fund. I also think it's important for us to look at the trend line for the general fund balance. Is it accurate to say that in the absence of any levy, to keep our budget balanced, we are using roughly $1 million per year out of unallocated general fund?
Currently, we are using about $900,000 a year out of, let me back that up. It was 900,000 for the biennium. Let's not confuse our dollars. We've done that before and accidentally doubled. $900,000 per biennium. So.
But in.
But that's without any growth.
And in terms of what the spreadsheets that we've been using or showing is that, starting with the 2728 biennium, it's closer to $1 million per year?
I don't have that in front of me, but yes.
Yeah.
That's correct. Let's see, who hasn't spoken yet? I think this one, Good.
So the spreadsheet that we're talking, or that, that you've spoken and that I provided was one that Councilmember Ferratani asked me to do because I was having a hard time trying to determine exactly, I mean, I, I was having a problem. So the spreadsheet was developed, and if you, and if somebody can call it up, it really shows where we are right now if we don't do a levy. So if you put in zero, use the bottom, the bottom one, scroll down to the bottom.
Right here, right?
We want to scroll, so just that lower, that lower options with cuts restored is shown, okay, right there. Okay, so if you take that out and where you can see to the graph to the right.
Okay, give me one second to make this. I should have made this fullscreen before I shared it. Hang on. We'll get there.
Mr. Paul, then John, and then, and Semra.
Is it not?
All right.
Okay.
There we go.
This is better. So you can see that without doing anything, there's a graph on the right that we are going to really fall below resources at the 203132, and that's without anything being done. So if you put it, start putting in amounts, you can start seeing where that will go. So for example, if you put in, say, 15, 15 cents, if you put in 15 cents. Okay, then you can see that that gets us above that line and that at the end of 2032, we would have a general fund, a reserve balance of, or excuse me, a general fund balance of $7 million. And I think Councilmember Riddle said that she was comfortable with 6 million. So this call, I mean, we didn't, we need to do something. So it's a matter of doing something now, doing something later. If you put in 2028 in the year, the year that levy starts, then you can see that we are going to be very close to our minimum fund balance at that point. So in order to catch up, to make $7 million at the end of 2032, maybe you put in 25 cents there. Okay, that's not enough, so put in 28 cents. Not enough, so put in 32 cents. So there, you know, now you're almost at $6 million, but you can see why this tool was what I was looking for so that we can see how, what fund we put in and what year we start, so that you can see where we will end up. I think that we all should, should decide on a general fund balance. And it looks that if we started a levy in 2026 and it was, say, 15 cents, according to your sheet, it, it looked like, if I added all that up, it looked like $674,000 annually. At, at 15 cents, that would cover that cost 3.6 times. So even if these numbers are off by a few percentage points, it still gives you an idea of what happens when you play with these, the year and the amounts. It is definite that we are going to be in trouble in 20, at the end of 2032. That's, you know, all the research says that, and this shows it very graphically that that will happen. So I like this tool because it gives us scenarios and it gives us a, a point of which to discuss on what do we want? So we see, according to your sheet you provided, that we're short $674,000 annually. But this, over the, over the six, the eight years, it would still cover that amount on an average basis. So is that $674,000 annually, is that what you're trying to, to cover?
Can you tell me what sheet you're looking at? I'm sorry, I don't know where you're getting 674,000.
It's the one that's the budget challenges.
Oh, sorry.
You can have fun. So when I add all those up, that's what it totals on an annual basis. And I, I also want to make a point that this, these numbers have the budget cuts restored in them, which I do believe are very important. So the budget cuts are restored in there, and then if these are on top of it.
So you're just adding the 9/11, you're adding the increases that are listed on.
Yeah.
The budget challenges.
Yeah, so I, I'm just, because looking at these bigger numbers, I, I could, I personally couldn't tell because I don't read budgets like that. So I needed something simpler that a layman could understand and see the, the graph move and see where we are.
So what we were talking about, and you can't really see it on here, but it is this cell here. The, what the levy was attempting to cover was the delta between the revenues and the expenditures, not just these increases. They're part of that total, but this delta has been an ongoing problem. This is an increase to that. What this anticipates, if you go 15 cents, is you're roughly covering these increased costs and you're taking a little bit out of the general fund reserves each year to balance your budget. That is certainly an approach you can take. It would, the discussion then in 2031, when the levy would need to be renewed, is where are we then? How much, you know, could you, you probably couldn't continue at that same rate. I think that's why some other council members have suggested keeping a little bit more in there. So it's, it's all how you feather it out and how long you can make that general fund.
Correct.
The 16% last.
But you can still, you can still, if you decide on what the fund balance total that you want, you can come up with it by just plugging in levy rates.
Yeah.
So I've asked my council member, does this make any sense to you?
Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
I don't know if it's a point of order or whatever it is, but there's a clarification. If I could get Kirk McLean to put up the spread, the, the table that I sent you.
I'll stop sharing. Okay, if I sit down.
Yeah. Before we do that, I want to check with John and Semra, Councilmember Riddle and Councilwoman Lebo, about whether, are you amenable to this continuing? Or should we come back to it?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I, I just wanted a clarification with the numbers is, I'm assuming none of this is taken into account, the budget adjustment that we've been presented at the last budget finance meeting. Is that correct?
The budget.
The budget adjustment that we received at the, so none of these spreadsheets are including the budget.
No, they do not.
No, they did not.
This is based off the six-year forecast and the adopted budget.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
That's what I expect.
Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Well, I think everybody in council has the, has this sheet. It's the one that's, it starts with the phrase target general fund balance at the end of 2030. It'll come up on screen for the rest of you hopefully shortly. Okay, there we go. Okay, so I apologize for being so small and so scrunchy. I didn't have a whole lot of time to format this, but this is a combination of, I guess, from both, from Councilmember Good as well as Councilmember Goldman. And the idea is that we're all looking at this in many different ways. And I was trying to find a concordance between all the methods by which we look at this. So the first column literally states, okay, this is the thing that Councilmember Good, you were speaking of, which is what do you think the target should be for our general fund balance? I use the end of 2030 because that's the last full biennium that the levy would cover. So it's not 2031 when the levy would potentially expire. It is literally the year before that. Okay, so over, way over, fourth column, budget scenario for either 2030 or 32, is an idea that Councilmember Goldman had, which was, okay, here are some of the scenarios. Increase the general fund. which was, okay, here are some of the scenarios. Increase the general fund cumulative balance by one million at the end of twenty thirty two and so forth. And you can read what those scenarios play out to be. So this is using the spreadsheet that we all just saw and playing this out. The one liberty I took with this is then adding the second and third columns, because I've heard from various council members that that would help. Uh, what's the tax rate? We need to get to that target balance at the end of twenty thirty. And then at the twenty thirty expenditure rate, uh, what's that general fund balance mean in terms of the number of days we can literally pay the operating expenses for the city? Okay, everybody okay with that? All right. And then the final column way over on the right is um, just using a simple projection tool that I have, I basically said, okay, when, when are we going to hit essentially zero in the uh cumulative fund balance? And that's the year, the biennia that you see there. So not surprisingly, as basically the rate gets lowered or as the target gets lowered, the exhaustion of the reserve happens more soon.
So Riddle.
Uh, just to clarify that question, uh, the general fund balance at the end of twenty thirty, that's just complete total. That's not above the reserve. That is including the reserve as well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Customer good.
In our surrounding cities, I believe that there's somewhat of an average of how long they how many days the expenditure will run the city. I think that hundred and fifty days is one of our neighbor cities that uh has the highest general fund balance, which is about a hundred and fifty days. So at twenty four cents, it looks like you could run the city for almost a year. So that's another consideration is how long do we want to be able to run the city? I'm just offering that out.
Make sure, check with other folks here. Customer.
Yeah, I, I think it's phrased differently. That's what I was hoping to get at too, is where is our comfort level? You know, above beyond that sixteen percent. Um, I would also just again echo that it, it would be important to know as a group, what is our target general fund amount? Um, and not just what is a snapshot since COVID, but I think pre-COVID, where is our comfort level then historically? Are we significantly beyond that? And if so, then I think then that leads for more conversation. If we are not significantly, then I, I just, I think that's some important metrics that's going to help define the parameters for us.
Customer Riddle.
Yes. So um, looking at your uh space there, it looks like the sixteen percent reserve is somewhere between the four to five million, I think in this uh of current. And so the way I'm interpreting this is anything that gets us above that or anything we're looking at above that five million and up, that would be the unallocated fund sort of amount, unless we're actually advocating for increasing our reserve. But if we assume that we're not changing our policy of the reserve itself, anything over at five million and up, that's, that's extra. So one million two minute over the reserve. So to me, my, my approach is similar uh to council member McCartney. What is our tolerance? Risk tolerance above the reserve. We know that we'll use the reserve if we need to. You know, if the city needs to run and we get nothing coming in, we can make that happen through a major natural disaster, whatever it takes. My risk tolerance is really low right now. You know, we have uh the feds that are pulling back funding. We have state that is pulling back funding. We have everybody is hurting. So opportunities for grants could be getting less and less every year. One-time funds cannot sustain us. Um, because I'm seeing less and less opportunity for one-time funds. So my risk tolerance is very low. So I don't have an interest in us drawing down to our reserve intentionally at any point here in the future. We need to have that buffer. And the reason I brought up uh the budget adjustment is we are just six months into the year and we've already discovered that we have a budget adjustment we need to make that is more expenses. It's not added revenue. I really wish you would come with these things with added revenue, but we usually get them because there's budget adjustments. This particular one that was presented to budget and finance committee is just shy of nine hundred thousand. So we're talking about having a deficiency when we're looking at all these spreadsheets. It's not even including that extra nine hundred thousand of expenses that we have to account for. So in other words, the reality of these budget problems is getting worse. Um, but it's necessary. I mean, it is again, it is around, most of it's around uh police. And um, again, uh, police and public works, equipment, vehicles, things that the city needs just to run. I mean, we have to have plows in the winter or we will hear from people. We can't strand people in their homes. There are things that we need to do, right? M- my preference is that we maintain an unallocated fund that allows us to weather these storms without having to impact the emergency funds of the reserve. Whether that's four or five million dollars. I, I'm, I'm struggling, but we need something. And right now, um, trying to remember what what our remaining allocated funds are right now. And I wish Lindsay was here because she'd know off the top of her head. But I'm thinking we need to keep about five thou- uh, five million dollars in there so that if things, if, if something drops out of the blue, we can adjust. It also gives us opportunities. I know we have an opportunity fund, but it's not huge. It gives us opportunities to flex if some amazing thing comes along and not risk us then again, getting into a budget conundrum where we're dropping back into the reserve. So I think four to five million as a consistent unallocated fund makes me feel more comfortable. That's kind of closer where my risk tolerance is. I know it feels like we're just holding people's money, but looking forward, feds losing their, or, or holding back money, state holding back money, I think we need that.
I, I'm just going to provide a little historical context, if I may, colleagues. Um, having been budget chair of co-chair for over a decade previously. When um former mayor Johnson and I joined the council, the city was in, in dire straits. Um, there'd been layoffs, there had the, the uh reserves were down at a very, very low, not only very low level numerically, but also the level of reserves. And I can't remember right off, off, it was single digits uh that was required by the council. The operating uh um uh reserves were, were down to a couple of weeks, basically. And it took literally from two thousand eleven to about two thousand seventeen or eighteen to claw our way back to a level including to level, not where we are right now, because there's, there was one-time funds in that, in, in, in the unallocated fund balances right now, but the, but to a level through fiscal prudence, through very lean um uh budgeting and to changing in the policy by the council to say, we are saying, what is our threshold for risk? Sixteen percent is what the floor was that the council established. The question I've raised before is, are we in a dire emergency to draw down on the budget stabilization fund? Or knowing that historically it took us a better part of, really better part of almost a decade to claw our way back from the abyss? When we talk about a delay in having this conversation with the public and putting it to the voters, the question I have is, in it, the question I have is, we're, we're not bringing in additional revenue for the next couple of years. We can't count on anything addition, additional. And the question is, what if something precipitous happens in, in that timeframe going forward? How close to that cliff do we ever want to get to be? And obviously I'm biased because I've been there before with, with, with our, with other colleagues. And um so my concern again comes down to, it is a very, it, it, there's no question, we'll be back up for a second. There's no question. It's a, this is the most difficult thing you will ever do as policymakers to say to the community, we need to ask for more. At the same time, I think the record will show that over the previous years and through um, the pandemic, there were furloughs, there were all sorts of things to keep those levels reserves intact. Our staff um, and administration um made sacrifices to make sure that we had, and you are able to have these, have this conversation now as opposed to having it during the pandemic or subsequent years. So the other thing I wanted to talk to, talk just briefly about is the color of money. It's been brought up over and over again. And this is, this is on all of us about the education question of like the O two fund, the traffic uh camera safety revenues. Those under state statute cannot be used for anything other than complete streets. And the definition is in the RCWs. I, I, I probably said it twenty times this year, but clearly we need to get that message out to people. And similarly, the general fund is the most fungible fund. It's the most flexible fund. Other funds, including sewer, um, other, other funds that come in, we get, uh, revenues that we get in too are not fungible. For example, REIT one and REIT two, there've been some modifications to those um, by the state legislature about a little bit of loosening the, the, the strings on the restrictions on what those revenues can be utilized. So it is important to focus on the, the funds that uh, the, the general fund and understand that it's the most fungible thing, that some of the other funds are not definitively not um, and I'm making this very simplistic. The other thing that's really important is that the council contingency and the strategic opportunity fund were created for very specific purposes. One, um, the council conti- strategic opportunity fund was created for, to leverage investment in something so that we could go out and get additional grant funds for other, uh, and, and recoup those different funds. If we do not have a certain allow, amount of funds available, for example, to get to, I'll just pull this out of my ear, a ten percent design on a certain project, it's very difficult for us to apply for grant funding. So I wanted to mention that too, because I think that that's important to think about where we are right now, where we want to be and what unknowns potentially we could be facing over the next two, three, four years. He'll throw a good, you've been waiting patiently.
So uh, council member Riddle talked about a, an amount. And so I would just want to bring up if a levy started in twenty twenty six at fifteen cents, we would have a cumulative general fund balance at the end of twenty twenty six of almost ten million dollars. The next two years, we would have a general fund balance of just about nine million. At the end of twenty thirty, we would have a general fund balance of eight point five billion. And at twenty thirty one, thirty two, we would have seven million. That cost of fifteen cents would cost an annual homeowner about a hundred and fifty dollars a year. Which is uh, and if it was twenty four, or excuse me, twenty four cents, it would be two hundred and forty dollars a year. So that uh general fund balance at the end of twenty thirty two is going to be two hundred and ninety three percent over the general fund reserve of sixteen percent. Which is two million, four hundred and five thousand is what the general fund reserve at sixteen percent is. And that is actually fairly stable. Uh, the next year, the general fund balance would be at four point five million. So this doesn't really cause us to draw down our general fund balance by that much, maybe less than a million dollars. And we would still be well over and it calculates out to be about two hundred and ten days or so um between two hundred and ten, two hundred and thirty seven at nine million and two hundred and ten days at eight million. At, that's at fifteen cents. So when you go that much higher, let me throw it in there real quick. Then you get a general uh cumulative gen- general fund balance, not that much more. But yet it costs a lot more money. So at the end of twenty thirty two, you'd have almost ten million dollars at twenty four cents.
Deputy Mayor for Tony, I think.
Thank you.
It's a two million dollar difference.
Thanks, council member. And uh, one of the things that I wanted to mention about this sheet that we had been seeing previous is that um the assumption that I've made there, and I, I'm going to check with our uh city administrator, um, that the initial amount at the end of twenty twenty four for the, for the uh general fund balance was about nine point nine million. Is that reasonable?
Correct. Yeah, I can look at that real quick.
Okay. Assuming that's reasonable. And it's, and the other assumption that I made is that we've restored the four hundred and fifty five thousand per biennium cuts. I've also assumed that we are not even addressing our council priorities we set back in March of hiring a grant writer or hiring a climate action manager or doing any of these things that we were basically looking to do. And so my point is that um just treading water to me is not doing right by our community. So what I really want to think about is basically, well, if we want to do these kinds of things, because we can actually use those services, we can make life better here, make it more interesting for people, make it more worthwhile. And as, uh, as also been mentioned, I'd also like to keep a reserve so that, as one of our commenters just said, you know, we're not getting, uh, and I want to check with, with uh city administrator Hill again, we're not getting reimbursed by FEMA for the bomb cyclone in November, right?
No, we've also been denied.
Yeah. So, so the point is that there are those kinds of things that are going to happen because basically we're uh, in, we're two ravines. There's no way we're not going to get flooding at some point. So I really want to keep a healthy reserve so that when, and I'm not saying reserve correctly there. I want to keep a healthy unalloca- uh, unalloca- whatever you want to call it, general fund balance so that we can cover these things when the city has to eat those costs. And so I'm going to argue basically strenuously for keeping us in the twenty four to twenty eight range. And the point is that I really want to keep a healthy ten million-ish balance.
Thank you. Councilor McCartney.
I, at first I want to establish that I think, yes, restore the cuts, agree with that. I think without a doubt, the police department needs funds. And I think we should give them all the tools that they need and ask. They are the heartbeat of this city. So that said, my perspective is coming from what will pass. And I feel that at a twenty four, twenty eight cent rate um that it might not pass. And then I think we're in trouble at that point. Um, that for, for a lot of reasons, you know, we're in very tough economical times, which we're all aware of. We are coming off the backs of not passing previous levies. We have never passed a levy successfully. Um, all those things I think stack against us. Um, and at the end of the day, I want to ensure that the city has the tools that they need with a, the additional um, HR staff and restoring those funds and also that the police department has what they want. So I, when looking at this tool, we're seeing that maybe we can maintain a, a healthy reserve amount. And we could ask for a levy amount, but less, uh, less than what is being proposed. That's kind of where I'm thinking at. The other piece that I would say is that now we're having a little bit different conversation in terms of an amount than we were having previously. And I, my question is, do we have a drop dead date of tonight? Or can we continue this conversation to, I think, uh, public comment was around August fourth? Is that August fifth, August fifth? Okay. And then not that we take our foot off the gas by any means, but this is very impactful discussion for people and um what it means for our city. And I think it's, I think we should continue to discuss this.
City Minister Hill.
So one of the things that we need to finish the final documents for the county is a number. City Attorney Pratt can weigh in, but she needs a week or more to finish the explanatory statement that is one of those requirements. So when we get towards the end of July, we're about a week out from that August fifth deadline. So sooner is better. You know, we've got calculations. We, you know, you can determine what that rate would be, how much that would be to the homeowner, what you would have in reserves. Um, I have a calculation. We can plug it into a resolution if you're ready tonight, but I don't think we can wait until the last meeting of this month. Um, if it needs to be kicked, uh, you would need to hold a special meeting um before then.
Thank you, administrator. Vice Chair Goldman.
Yes. So the question has come up about risk and risk tolerance. And I will try to answer that. And it depends a bit on the health of our budget. If we're in a place where our budget is healthy and it is easy for us to have a balanced city budget that does not eat into general funds, then I would be more comfortable getting us closer to the sixteen percent. But that's not where we're at. We're at a place where we are eating into our general fund balance in order to maintain a balanced city budget, a status quo budget. And so I would like to keep a larger balance in the general fund. Now I'm open to discussions about what that level should be. Currently it is ten million. Could it be a little bit less? Perhaps. I wouldn't want to go a lot less because then we're in a place where if, let's say, public defender costs are going to go up or there's an emergency, now we're really going to be eating into it. So I'm open to that discussion, but I do think we need to keep the broader context in mind that
So I'm open to that discussion, but I do think we need to keep the broader context in mind that I would not call our current budget healthy in the sense that we are eating out, it's a million, about a million dollars, 900,000 for this biennium. Once we restore the cuts, which it sounds like there's broad support for, we're looking at more like $2 million per biennium. And so that context needs to be, to be there as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Riddle, Councilmember Lebo.
And another piece to this that I've been thinking about is that our investment funds are part of this unallocated funds. So that money is working for us. We're getting money back from it. It's not sitting there latent. Not to say that we want to keep more in there for that purpose, but that is important to know that that, the funds are there for us to be able to pull. And, uh, when there's an amazing opportunity, when we have, uh, a short-term emergency of sorts, but it's also providing us money through our laddered investment process. If we reduce that down, our amount of investment money goes down and we get less in, uh, interest coming back, um, from those. So that's another piece of keeping that somewhat healthy. It actually helps the whole budget actually grow and be supported. I also, again, looking at these numbers that we're seeing on our spreadsheets, it doesn't include, you know, the current budget adjustment, which again, as uh, Councilmember, uh, Goldman was saying, you know, well, the 900 plus the 455, and now we have another 900. Um, and that's just to get us back to baseline. And baseline has been a couple of years of not really expanding where we should have. I want to take us back to the stress that is on our staff. Folks are working more, uh, responsibilities than they should, but they are doing a fantastic job of carrying through. That can't last. No one can last that long with that amount of stress. We're going to lose good people. People who know the city, who know the people, who know how it works. They have that institutional knowledge. We're going to burn them out. So to hold the baseline to me is not doing justice to the staff here at the city, which is paid for out of the operating budget. We need to respect, uh, that, uh, they should be treated like people and they should be provided a half-time HR person. So they're not doing the work of one and a half people, things of that nature. So just to say that, okay, we're going to take into consideration what we didn't get into this budget cycle and we're good is really a disservice to the truth of what this city should be running at. It should be running like a good city. We should not be losing people to stress and overwork. We should be keeping them and having them train the next generation of folks who live in work here. So I'm along with Councilmember Goldman, uh, cutting it real close just doesn't make me feel good. I think we need to be put this, uh, levy rate to the place where this community can be served by the people who live, or people who work here. And so looking at that 24 cent zone gives us that opportunity to be an amazing, fully functioning city that is respecting its employees, providing all the services that are required for the city, not eating into our budget every year. It gives us something closer to that appropriate level of, of funding.
Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. It's been a very difficult discussion for all of us because raising the property tax, as we know, uh, has not been successful in Lake Forest Park. And we can debate, you know, is our levy rate that we currently have, how does that compare to other cities? I think though that, um, it's really about asking our citizens to pay more for city services. The property tax is a regressive tax. It's not income-based. It's, and it doesn't benefit, um, renters don't have the advantage of, for example, um, being able to, uh, get a low income or a senior discount because the property tax is part of the rent. Uh, so it doesn't serve. We do have other levers of raising revenue. Administrator Hill did say that there is the opportunity for a sales tax, uh, 1/10 of 1% increase. If this levy doesn't pass, uh, this year, if the council so decides to, uh, put one on the ballot, we are not cutting services, uh, for 2026 and I would be opposed to cutting services in 2027. And we can debate, you know, did the fact that we didn't, uh, approve the mayor's, um, increase for staffing, is that a cut or is that an increase? This is asking our citizens to pay more money to the city for the services. Uh, this is money that they have to earn. We then have the responsibility to spend it appropriately. I am comfortable with a lower fund balance than we currently have. I think we've been fortunate over the last few years to have a significant increase in the fund balance. It's difficult for me to say to the citizens, we need more of your hard-earned money because we don't think that we can run our city on a less of a fund balance than we have now of about $10 million. If we go forward with a, a 24 cent, uh, levy increase. I think, and I think the citizens have been pretty clear, um, they do want the city to run lean. Uh, it's good to see that the citizens in the survey thought that we are going, think that we're going in the right direction. Um, but I don't think that most citizens hold politicians in high esteem. Hopefully they do us. But, uh, if they did, then perhaps would have passed the other two levies, but they didn't. As a whole, the city is very, um, how do I say? We have many people that can afford these kinds of levy increases. But there are very many hardworking people that this kind of increase is a significant hit to them. And so I think they do want us to run lean. Um, they don't want us to be comfortable. Because when we're comfortable, we are then spending their monies in ways that they may not think is the best way to spend them. So I'm not supportive of a 24 cent, uh, levy, uh, increase. I think we should spend down the money that we have built up, uh, to be respectful of our citizens.
Colleagues. Yeah, Councilmember Good.
Hate to be chiming in again, but okay, so our general fund revenue for 25, 26 is about 25 and a half million dollars. Our existing general fund balance is about one-third of that. Just let that sink in. It's one-third of that. Now, the figures that I've been giving, have been, are with the budget cuts restored. That does have the HR, you know, it has the person for HR, it has the police vehicles in it. Those are very important things. And I think that a 24 cent amount won't pass. It's $240 a year. That's binding, that's financially strapping someone $240 a year for six years.
Councilmember Saunders, been very quiet.
I'm very contemplative. Um, on point to what Councilmember Good just said, um, that amount would obviously not apply to, um, people of disability, lower income, senior citizens. That would, that would be an exception, correct?
Correct.
So the average citizen, based on the, the value of the home, the average home in Lake Forest Park would be about, if we did the 24 cent, was around $200 a year?
200 more, 240.
Okay.
On a million dollars.
So per month, we're talking?
Uh, annually. Or, no, month.
Per month?
Yes.
So monthly, if you broke it down on a monthly basis.
Annually, annually, annually. Yeah.
Right.
It's, yeah, 200 plus annually.
Right, right. Divided by 12. I'm just saying. So I'm, I guess I'm trying to get it down to, that sounds pretty affordable to me. I can't speak for everybody. Um, I feel like if you, um, based on what you're going to be getting for that money, um, our police department is very important. And, and I feel like, I feel like we need to make a compromise. We maybe don't do the high end of the 32 cents or the low end of 15 cents. We have a compromise in the middle. Maybe we do 20 cents. I feel like running lean is not a, uh, that feels dangerous to me. I feel like in the light of what has happened in, in Texas, I'm not saying that would happen here, but you never know. I feel like we need to have a buffer. And, um, I feel like if you are transparent with the, with the citizens of exactly how much money we would have and, and what, exactly what it's going for, and you explain to them and educate them, how this is going to benefit everybody across the board. I feel like they, maybe they would be more likely to vote for this. And we, we haven't had a levy pass in what, since the 60s? Right? 1960s? Ever. So we, we want this, we want this to pass. So I feel like the, the way to get this to pass is to, um, be attractive to everybody, the average person. So a compromise, go to the middle of the road. That's just my two cents.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Ferretani.
Four cents.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. Um, and, uh, one thing I want to remind council is that we did have that survey has been quoted, uh, recently. And, uh, you, uh, in addition to its unprecedented return rate, uh, the fact is that, uh, um, we had a clear majority, I think it was at least 60% that said that 30 cents was okay. Once we got to 45 and 60, which are of course ludicrous numbers, yeah, there was, there was of course hesitancy. But the fact is that all these numbers that we're talking about are less than that number. So I think there is some appetite. There is some concern amongst the community. And it's always those quiet ones that you never worry about, right? But those are the folks that are basically saying, hey, you know, I'm going to read from, uh, the city administrator's report, okay? Cause I think there's something very cogent here. It's under disturbance under the police log. Rolling DV that occurred in Seattle and ended in LFP. Our officers detained the suspect and called Seattle PD who stated that they didn't have anybody available. Seattle PD eventually took over the investigation after several calls from NORCOM and from our surgeon, our sergeant on duty. But it took two hours before their arrival on scene. See, that's my nightmare scenario, right? Is that we're not there to basically backstop that whole thing. And so I think the, uh, fact is that most people in this community realize this. And so that's why I'm asking you to consider basically at least a 24 cent because we can keep the healthy reserve then. We can hire the retirees that are coming up in our police force. We can get people trained up in an adequate amount of time. That's really the bottleneck right now, right? Yeah, we're going to restore the cuts. That's going to get our HR person, uh, 80% help. And that's going to help speed up. I, I think it's going to cut in half the time it takes to onboard a new officer. I'm all for that, but that's down the line, right? So I don't want that happening again where we can afford that part-time help for our HR department. So I really want to keep this healthy balance.
Thank you, Councilmember McCartney.
To go off of what you just were saying on the 24 cents, I think that we can achieve all those things and still keep a healthy balance at a lower rate. I, I agree. Those are all the things that I want as well. What I want very much is to have something pass. And our likelihood of having something pass, I think is going to be at a lower rate.
I would just add just quickly, historically, we, we talked about the previous two levies. I, I think we're kind of comparing, in many ways, we're comparing apples to cider blocks because the first levy was, um, overwhelmingly defeated. It was just trust us. The city went right up to the edge of the cliff and said, oh, we need more money. There was no cogent con- concrete, bringing that back into the mix, plan for how those funds were going to be extended. It was just, uh, and, and as a result of that, there was real serious, um, service cuts as well as, as, um, several people had to be, their positions had to be, had to be removed from, from the roles, from the payrolls. And I think the second, the second, um, you know, levy, the failure in 2021, that was, that's a, that's a completely different animal. That was a permanent situation. This is not, this is time limited, uh, to, to the, the, the term that you guys have talked about. I think the other thing too is the runway on that levy was a very, very short one. It, it was, we were late to the party. There weren't as many discussions. You go through the legislative history of this discussion. We've been having these discussions here for more than dozen meetings publicly. Administration has been working behind the scenes to get the information that you're requesting. You've been having private meetings with the, the city administrator, city finance director, other members of the staff, the police department trying to understand exactly what their needs are and where the deficiencies are. I, I think that the, I, I think there's a danger in looking back at what did not pass in the, in the past. With the exception of, we've learned from that, those two mistakes and we're not going, we're not repeating them. So similarly, those learnings that we've learned from the failure of those levies, but, and also the outcome of those, of, of those failures have allowed us to get to that place where we are now, where you, you have an opportunity to make a decision. There are other cities right now that do not have opportunities. They are in dire straits. Our friends at Edmunds, I hear daily about how troubled they are, they are, and they let it percolate and percolate until it, it, it boiled into a conflagration. And to have to face, uh, a situation of selling off city assets like they potentially might have to do would be devastating for any community and, and our hearts go out to them. I want to make sure, uh, as, as member of the administration, that we were thinking about how long it takes to build up to a place where we feel comfortable. I personally, right now, am not comfortable where we are because staff is spending, as, as has been commented tonight. Staff is working double duty. We are, we have vacancies right now. And we have vacancies not only because we don't have the HR people, but we don't have, uh, wages are not as competitive as what some of our neighboring cities can provide. We're getting poaching from, the, the chief can tell you, we lose, we lose police officers to other cities and other communities. We cannot attract the top, top, uh, people that are out there looking for positions necessarily because when they find out what we are offering them, we're not, we're not as competitive as we like to be. And to the point of, of, of making sure that the staff thrives, I really believe, uh, you know, uh, as mayor, it is my job to be protective of staff. But it's also my job to make sure that people have a healthy, happy working environment. And we do, we have a great team that is working incredibly hard right now. They're like a startup. They pitch in everywhere something needs to happen. City Administrator Hills act, acted as public works director for a number of, of months. Uh, we've had other staff working, you know, around the clock to fill in other directors' roles in the past. So getting to a place where we're not only fully staffed, but our staff feels like they have the opportunity not to just do the things that the council are asking them to do, but also think ahead for the initiatives that they know as professionals that are important to our community. That's how Racer came about. That's how some of the other outreach programs from the PD came about. Having the, having the, the room to be able to accomplish those things and have the create, the time for the creativity. So, Councilmember Saunders.
I 100% agree with you, Mayor. Um, everything you just said is absolutely spot on. I, I just, my concern is that, um, if we go too high of a rate, then the levy won't pass at all. And then where are we? So would it be better to have a compromise and come down to like a middle ground and have at least something go through? And then have something pass rather than nothing pass? That's, that's, I guess that's where I'm concerned about that.
Then Vice Chair Goldman.
So i- in response to that, I think the challenge is if we, if we miss the mark, and then we've got a six-year levy and the likelihood of having them approve a levy in the middle of a six-year levy is unlikely. One thing for us to remember as a council is that this isn't a guaranteed increase every year. This is where we can go as a council, as we look at the budget, every biennium. This is the, uh, this raises the 1% cap to whatever we determine is the new cap. It does not necessarily mean we have to go that far every biennium. If we feel that we are okay. So that is a piece of this is it's not necessarily, if we feel like we're have too much money, God, when will that ever happen? Let's get there. But if we feel that way, then we don't need to pull the whole levy rate every biennium. So there's, or every year. So that would be, I think, my risk tolerance to going with a much lower level and then finding a problem in two, three years. Then we don't really have the ability to kind of fix it. Whereas now, we can tailor, uh, with a 24 cent. We can tailor that down and not collect all of it every year if that's what we determine.
Administrator Hill's looking thoughtful.
No, I just want to clarify, um, with, with the levy rate, you, you set the rate, the option that you have in the outer years is taking the CPI. So you will, if you set it at 24 cents or 20 cents, that is So you will, if you set it at twenty four cents or twenty cents, that is what you will get every year. That's, that's not negotiable in the outer years. Your option to change in the future is, do you take CPI? If CPI is three, you take three or do you look at your budget and say, you know what, we only need one and a half? So the rate is the rate. I just wanna make that clarification.
Thank you for that clarification.
So uh, we've talked about these budget cuts. We don't need a levy to put back uh, what the mayor has asked for in his proposed budget. The council can decide now if it wants to fund an eight-tenth of a uh position for human resource staff. We can do that right now. We don't have to have a levy to do it. Uh, to the question of if the levy doesn't pass, we can always come back the next year. You know, some voters will just vote no the first time because they think maybe it's an overreach. Because, you know, as a council, uh, you don't wanna uh leave money on the table, so to speak. Wouldn't it be nice to have all the money that we all needed and think that, you know, a ten million dollar fund balance is not comfortable enough? I think there's some citizens out there that would say to the city council members, I think ten million is more than enough as a reserve. So uh, the question is, are we being respectful to our taxpayers? They're the ones who have to pay the money. We're the ones who have to make the decisions to spend it. So if we think we need additional HR support right now, we can do that. We don't need a levy. And if the levy doesn't fail, we can come back later. We could raise the sales tax. We could do other things. We could also I lost my train of thought there, but we could also
I'm sorry, John, where you didn't interrupt me.
No, I I've lost my train. Getting late. Okay, I think it's just about being respectful to our taxpayers and I'm comfortable with the lower.
Thank you, Councilor Vice Chair Goldman.
Um, so here's where I'm at. Um, you know, considering my level of risk tolerance, considering the budget, I would like to see twenty four cents. I could accept as a compromise twenty cents. Um, we should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I am deeply concerned if we were to go with sixteen cents that we're leaving ourselves in still a somewhat precarious position because we don't know what is our environment going to look like in two years or four years. So that's that, that's basically where I'm at right now.
Down the direction to somebody else. Councilor Riddle.
Yeah, so just, just to reiterate my position that ongoing expenses like salaries, it is not ideal for them to be supported by one-time funds. So when we're looking at our graph and we see that a biennial variance is in the negative, that means we're covering our expenses with one-time funds, which happen to be kind of funds from the ARPA and CARES at this point. And we're drawing into that every time. And that means our, we don't have a balanced budget. Now, there is, there is something you said about, can we draw it down a certain amount and then deal with it? But we don't know what the future holds. And I feel uncomfortable having a significant amount of our operating revenue continually pulling down that one-time funds. It's makes, it, my risk tolerances is not that high or, you know, is is not that high right now. So I would like a twenty four cent because it has a very small biennial variance. But it still does. Even at that number, we're still not that quote-unquote balancing the budget without using one-time funds. We're never gonna see funds like that ever again. I think that's a fairly solid statement. Even if a pandemic were to occur again, I don't think we're, have a federal in a position to be doing what they did last time. So using those wisely, using that one-time funds wisely is important to me. Supporting ongoing uh staffing with ongoing revenue is important to me. I think twenty four cents puts us in a balance between those.
I want to remind everyone on this council that we are also hard-paying taxpayers here. So, so yeah, do not forget that. And uh, fact is that uh, um, the way that I kind of look at our uh, general fund balance is it's an endowment. Like you, like Councilor Riddle was saying, we got it one time. We're never gonna get it again. And it, like any nonprofit, would you eat into your endowment? That would be a really terrible thing to do. I think in fact, uh, that's one of the reasons why nonprofits fail. So my point is that let's treat this that way. And that's really why I want to maintain it. So I'm still gonna strenuously argue for twenty four cents.
Councilor Saunders.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, where do we go from here then? I mean, how do we decide if we all agree on that twenty four cents?
Make a motion.
We put the motion.
Yeah, we can
Feel so inclined.
Certainly, somebody could make a motion. Uh, and council, I don't, I don't envy um your position right now. It's, it's a very difficult one. As I indicated before, it is the hardest thing you will ever do as a policymaker. I think the the, the question cut really comes down to what is your, what is your, your comfort level? With, with what the citizens believe and what your comfort level with where we are financially. And um, and then the rest can play out. I, I, I do appreciate the congeniality of this conversation. I really sincerely do. You know how much I, 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 I do appreciate that. It's, it's not lip service. And I really believe that whatever you decide to do, the, the community will accept one way or the other. So, Councilor Saunders.
Well, well, based on um, the discussion we've had this evening, I also too would feel comfortable with the twenty four cents. Prior to this evening, I, I was a little reluctant to, to go that high. I mean, that's, that's kind of middle ground actually, but um, based on everything that I've heard tonight, I, I feel like I'm leaning toward the twenty four cents. I think I would be okay with that. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Deputy Mary For Tony.
I'd like to move uh, resolution number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Lake Forest Park, Washington, providing for a ballot proposition to be submitted to the qualified electors of the city at the general election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five in conjunction with the state general election of a proposition authorizing the city to levy regular property taxes in an amount in excess of the limitations provided in chapter eighty-four point five RCW for police and public safety services beginning in twenty twenty-six, setting forth the ballot title and providing for other related matters. And for the uh, sake of knowing which version we're doing in the, let's see. Yeah, it's like section, well, it's in one of the where, it's in what, in the middle of the page, second page, whereas the um, one point two million, uh, well, I'll read the whole thing. Whereas the levy lid lift proposed would authorize an increase of approximately one point two million dollars in the city's regular property tax levy by an increase of approximately twenty-four cents per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation to a maximum rate of uh, zero point nine five three six seven dollars per one thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six as allowed by chapter eighty-four point five five RCW. The next whereas also men- mentions the approximately one point two million dollar figure. All right. And in section three, thank you, uh, the levy rate and duration. If approved by the majority of voters, the city shall be authorized to temporarily levy an additional regular property tax in the amount of twenty-four cents per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation for levy in twenty twenty-five and collection in twenty twenty-six. And for some reason in section six, uh, there's a highlighted um, general election in parentheses there. I'm not sure why that is.
It's just a correction.
All right, finally, uh, under the actual proposition um, uh, wording on the, what is that, fourth page? Uh, the second paragraph mentions the levy rate of zero point nine five three six seven dollars per one thousand dollars of collection. I think those are all the places where the, we had to customize it.
Hey, it's been moved to adopt.
I will second.
Okay, it's, it's moved, moved in second to adopt resolution twenty-five two zero two one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake Forest Park, Washington, providing for a ballot proposition to be submitted to qualified electors of the city at the general election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. In conjunction with a state general election, a proposition authorizing the city to levy the ra- regular property taxes in an amount in excess of the limitations provided in chapter eighty-four dot five five RCW for police and public safety services beginning in twenty twenty-six, setting forth a ballot title and providing for other related matters. Uh, and in the whereas is noted, noted that it is, the levy rate would be set at twenty-four cents per one thousand of assessed valuation to a maximum rate of, of point, uh, zero point nine five three six seven per one thousand in twenty twenty-six as allowed as allowed by chapter eighty-four fifty-five RCW. Kim, do I need to continue on or? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Councilor Relivo.
I would like to uh, move to amend uh, this resolution under section three levy rate and duration. Where it's increased each year in January by the annual percentage growth in the June to June, Seattle Tacoma Bellevue Consumer Rights Index for all urban consumers, CPI uh, dash U. I would like to move that we set a limit of five percent.
Second.
It's been moved in second to uh, limit, let's see, what section was that?
Section three levy rate and duration.
Oh, there we are. Uh, okay. To limit the CPI U to five percent. Is there any discussion?
May I speak to it?
Yes, you may, please.
So the reason I would suggest a uh, limit is that while the average uh, increase is less than five percent, there have been in particularly in recent years where the increase has been more than five percent and that would become the, therefore the new baseline for the following year's collections. And I just think it's respectful to the community to say that we were gonna set a limit on it. Uh, because otherwise, if you'd go without a limit, it would be the CPI. And if it's more than five percent, then that sets it for each year thereafter. So.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Point of order, just checking with.
Sorry, I just wanna explain that any um, amendment like that where there's a change in a in the, in the wording of section seven of the resolution where we've got the actual ballot title, there's a word count there. And so any amendment like this, just know we will have to change the wording in this section seven so that we get back to the seventy-five word count. I, and I don't, I do not wanna do that on the fly. But I can do it later, but I do not wanna do that.
Thank you, Councilor Riddle.
I think, and and now maybe I'll speak.
This is on the, on the.
On the amendment.
Thank you.
We, with, we can go up to CPI, but that is the portion that we as a, as a council could determine whether we wanna take that amount or not. Is that what I was hearing earlier? So we're not required to take the full increase of CPI if we feel as a council. So I think that we, I'd, I'd rather us not have to reword things. I know it's very important to get the exact right words in there. So I wouldn't be supportive of this, but I am supportive of council being diligent about what we're asking our community to pay for. So.
Councilor colleagues, other comments on or, on uh, the proposed amendment by Councilor Relivo? Deputy Mary For Tony.
I, I had a question for Attorney Pratt. Um, approximately, how many words do you think you'd need? And I know you don't want a wordsmith on the fly, but i- is it gonna be like whole, like, you know, twenty words or is it gonna be much less than that?
The, the maximum amount is seventy-five words.
Right.
And um, I have this version and I could tell you how many words we're at. I know we're under the seventy-five. We're not at the limit. Th- this can be added. It, I've had it in there at one point. I'm just saying it would, please know it, it will, the wording will change. I can, it can be done.
Okay.
And that would necess- necess- it'd be necessary for that to be done tonight for council approval, correct? Or could it?
No, I just want you to know.
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure we're not into procedural error here. Yes, Councilor Saunders.
I apologize. I just wanna make sure that um, I clear up any confusion I have on this um, under section seven toward the um, and the highlighted section that has the um, point nine five three six seven per one thousand dollars. I'm, I'm confused about that amount. Could somebody please?
That, that is the total rate. So currently it's point seven one cents. When you add the twenty-four cents, that's how you get that number. And we are required by statute to carry it out that many decimal places.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, Vice Chair Goldman?
Um, I am supportive of Councilmember Libo's amendment. Um, I think an important aspect of council governance is that we cannot tie the hands of a future council. So we cannot demand that they honor a five percent limit. I think it's reasonable. So I'm, I'm okay putting that into the, to the levy.
Any other comments on the, on the amendment? Uh, all those in favor of Councilmember Libo's amendment, please signify by saying aye. All, all those against, say nay.
Nay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just for clarification, if the ballot language says it will not exceed five percent, future council could not exceed five percent. I, I thought I heard something otherwise. I just wanna clarify, sorry.
I don't.
Were you all on the same page? Okay. Then I misheard.
Okay, you're fine. All right. Uh, so that, I meant, Councilmember Libo's amendment passes to add um, maximum cap of uh, on CPI U at five percent under section three. Okay, going back to the main motion at hand, the amended um, resolution twenty-five two zero two one, any other comments on topic? Deputy Mary For Tony, I'm starting to lose my.
And we, you all know where I stand on this. I'm very much in favor of this. Um, but what I wanted to express was my deepest admir- or admiration for how all of you basically contributed to this effort. And what, whether you fall on one side of the line or the other, doesn't matter to me. The fact that you thought about it so carefully and were very open about basically how you felt and in the numerous discussions we've had, I hope the community also kind of saw that. The fact that we really did carefully deliberate this. Uh, there was, we, we, we kicked over every stone. We looked everywhere. And yes, perhaps there's still some unanswered questions, but the basic idea, I think we're all very clear on. With, again, whether, with, whether you fall on one side of the line or the other. So thanks again for this discussion. Um, I'm hoping that at some point, somebody writes a manual for how we have to time all this stuff out. Because had we known that the runway was this long, we probably should have basically allocated time a little bit differently, but it's in my future file. But thank you again very much for all of your efforts.
That's a good.
I just wanna make a point that the, the difference is that we're talking about with twenty-four cents, which binds the annual, you know, income of people for six years. It's not that much difference than a lot lower rate. You, you're not getting that much for, you're, you're making people pay a lot more money. Then you're not, you're not getting what, I mean, it's just a little bit more. The revenue is still there to, to cover the other expenses. You're gonna, even at a lower rate, you're gonna have a healthy general fund balance. And it could be done for, for less. And I, I just wanna make a point of that.
Deputy Mary For Tony.
And to that comment, I wanna, I wanna reiterate to everyone that this is a very linear system. One cent per thousand is about a hundred thousand in additional revenue per by, uh, per year. And so the, you, you're, you're absolutely right. Lower would mean lower. But it's not that we're getting less bang for the buck. We're getting a proportional bang for the buck.
Yep. Other comments, Councilor Relivo.
So I respect that, uh, and it's been talked about a lot about how our um, expenditures are exceeding our revenue. And I think that uh, with the fund balance that we have, that twenty-four cents that we're I think we're going a little too far. I would be supportive of a levy rate of twelve cents. Uh, so with this particular res- resolution, I will not be supporting that.
Thank you, Councilmember. All those other comments on point. Okay, I hear none. Um, all those in favor of resolution twenty-five.
Mister Mayor, may we have a roll call?
Uh, sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. McLean, not prepared? Yeah, okay, um, let me read the resolution again here. Resolution twenty, uh, number twenty-five dash two zero two one, resolution of the city council for the city of Lake Forest Park, Washington, providing a ballot proposition to be submitted to the qualified electors of the city at the general election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five in conjunction with the state general election of a proposition authorizing the city to levy regular property taxes in an amount in excess of the limitations provided in the chapter eighty, chapter eighty-four uh, dot five five RCW for police and public safety services beginning in twenty twenty-six, setting forth a ballot title and providing for other related matters, noting. noting that the levy um in section, uh excuse me, in the whereas is uh the rate is being um addition is being saying increases being set at 24 cents and the levy maximum rate would be 0.95367 per $1,000 in 2026 uh with the amendment um in Councillor Lebo adopted by the council in section three levy rate and duration CPI U limited to 5%. Uh, Mr. McLean, would you please call the rule?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, gonna call your name um, starting with Councillor McCartney. Just answer yea or nay. Uh, Councillor McCartney.
Nay.
Councillor Saunders.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Fur- Furutani.
Yay.
Vice Chair Goldman.
Yay.
Councillor Riddle.
Yay.
Councillor Lebo.
Nay.
Councillor Good.
Nay.
Uh, was that a yea?
Nay.
Nay. I believe the motion passed uh four to three.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Appreciate it. And thank you, council, for a, I know, difficult decision. And um I would remind everybody to what Ann McFarland, her friend, has said in Jurassic Parliament. Once the decision has been made by the body, it's time to move forward. So I know you're all respectful of that. Um, moving on with our agenda here. One moment, folks. We only have a few more things left here. Let's see, uh, we're moving on quickly. Other business, uh Vice Chair Goldman.
Um, yes, I would just like to bring to everyone's attention, there are two um liaison positions that are unfilled at the moment. Uh, the first is the liaison to the Parks Board and the second is the representative to the SCA pick. Um, I would like to ask if there are any council members that are interested in serving either of those roles.
Councillor Lebo?
Um, I would be interested in serving on the SC SCA pick.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll get that. Can you account any other takers? And then Russell, if they. Thank you, John. That it's 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 actually a lot of fun. It's a good group.
And do we do we know what uh can you remind us when the Parks Board meets? The, do you know that offhand? I know.
Two, is it Tuesday? Last one. Oh, that's right, it was. Yeah. Except for this month, I think just changed, so.
Okay, plus last Wednesday.
If you want to think about it.
Yeah.
Um.
Go ahead, volunteer.
Okay, Councillor McCartney is also.
Oh, unless you want to.
Interested.
You want to? Now have at it, we'll run wrestle in January. With new.
Yeah, um, you you're amenable?
I'm amenable to that, thank you.
You want to jump on there? Perfect. Thank you, Councillor.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
I think we do.
It's the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Four Tuesday. Please.
Um, I would like to move that we nominate Councillor Lebo as our representative to the SCA pick and we nominate Councillor McCartney as the liaison to the Parks Board.
Second. So in order to second to nominate Councillor Lebo as a representative to the SCA pick and Councillor McCartney to liaison liaise with the Parks Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, the ayes have it, passes unanimously. Thank you, colleagues, for stepping up for that. It's important work. Okay, um, moving on quickly, uh any council committee reports? We only have, yeah, one basic. Council member reports. Councillor Lebo.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted a.
Oh, please.
Council member report. So the uh Planning Commission met and they are uh have before them the Climate Action Plan uh that they will be reviewing. Um, so uh they had a good presentation.
Climate element.
Thank you, climate element.
Thank you.
Um, I even wrote that down. Uh, so they've started the discussion to review that as part of the addition to the comprehensive plan. Uh, they're also uh beginning discussions about incentives for affordable housing. And now that the ordinance for the middle housing has passed, and then uh another item is to look at such things as code simplification with regard, for example, zoning where we have um lots of a similar size but have uh are very close. And so some of that consolidation is something that they'll be working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for always the help about uh.
Thank you. Any other council member reports? Okay, uh, oh, yes, Councillor Goldman, Vice Chair.
The Tree Board met last week. Um, first, I'll announce um our urban forest planner Drew has left. She is taking a position at a nonprofit, so we wish her well. Um, but before she left, she's arranged for the Tree Board to consider two grant applications. Uh, the first is with King Conservation District to do an updated uh tree canopy across a satellite image tree canopy study. Um, it's useful. It's what we used when we were looking at um under tree zones for the uh right-of-way tree ordinance. And then the second is with the Strategic Forestry Initiative, and that would help, among other things, we would be able to do an inventory of all our city-owned spaces. Uh, what trees we currently have, what spaces there might be for additional trees. It's something I believe the City of Bothell is is currently working on.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, any other Councilmember reports? Um, my mayor's report's very brief. A reminder, safety day on on uh uh Saturday, and we did bring the Dunk Tank back for Phil. So, no? I don't think our insurance will cover that anymore, chief. I mean, that thing was pretty dangerous. Uh, yeah, and yeah, and very, the water was very cold. I'm not sure how that worked out, that you and I both ended up with really, really cold water. Want to talk to the staff about that, but that's going to be on on Saturday. It'll be really fun. Um, helmets, life jackets, the whole thing. And and the cool part about last year was we actually had an excess of helmets and life jackets, which means the needs are being met. So um the people that have gracious and the companies that have graciously donated safety equipment for the kids. Um, if you have kiddos out there, the bicycle rodeo will be obstacle course is a perennial favorite. Um, it's um it's a fun, it's a really fun event. Uh, the culvert, Wash Dot Culvert under 104 is moving into full swing. So um there are um plans in place about the detour. Most of the work is occurring at night. Staff has been working very hard, both PD and Public Works, to make sure that this is facilitated the best as we can, working with the the 800 pound gorilla that is Wash Dot. So um if you have any questions about that, please reach out to myself or or um staff about about the culvert project. I I'm very hopeful that it will be as quiet as possible. The demolition of the structure will, I may have begun today. I was not on 104 today, but it's it's coming up very soon. So the old gas station is going to be removed as well as the apartment structures there. So there will be some noise for that at night. And that is all I had on my plate. City Administrator Hill, anything an administrator's report you would like to highlight?
Um, not in the report, but I have something to add to it. So on Tuesday, I was informed that um we have been recommended for the grant funding that we applied for through Conservation Futures to repay us 75% of the purchase of the Rose property. Um, so that has gone through committee. We were one of the cities selected. That then goes to King County Council um for approval in December, and then money would flow back to the city where we've already made the purchase, um probably after the first of the year. So we can replenish that fund with 75% and uh see what other parks projects we got on tap.
Thank you, Minister. Administrator Hill, and I I was holding my tongue not to steal your thunder. Big thanks to Administrator Hill for working on that grant opportunity. And 75% of the funds coming back into that fund for future park projects is is amazing. So with that, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, and wait a minute, hold on, don't we have to excuse somebody for being, wait a minute, you're all here. All right, if that were a journe.
Ooh, a chalk.
Somebody say nay.